I guess so. I look like somebody who just. Here we go again.
Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty P M on this December eleventh, twenty twenty four. Time for our first regular meeting of the month at this time. Mr. Hawk will offer an invocation. Mr. Crispin will lead us into pledge.
Heavenly Father, this evening, I thank you for the privilege of being part of this body. I thank you for what our town means to each one of us. I thank you for the progress that we've made during this year. And I just thank you for all the blessings that you bestowed on us. I thank you for creating us. And I pray that you would be with us in this meeting, that we would do things according to your will and that our decisions would be wise and that we would do everything to the betterment of the community. And I ask you so in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Gail, when I had students here, I always introduced them. Do you want to introduce your guest tonight?
Can we change our plans?
Sure. Oh, don't, uh, don't change if that, if you got something else planned.
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't know there were other plans. You didn't tell me there were other plans.
It's a, it's a little, yeah. We'll change your plans, Joe, no problem.
Okay.
Yes.
I would like to introduce retired ABC six news anchor who is now a Washington courthouse resident and would like to get involved in city and county affairs and history. Bob Kendrick, please meet our city council.
This doesn't happen in the city. This is not nearly as familiar. I really appreciate.
Doesn't happen in Columbus, but it happens here.
It's, uh, it's been just a tremendous, tremendous move for us. I can't say enough about how the community has welcomed my wife, Mary Jo and I. And I, it, she says it every day, we should have done it ten years ago, the community would have been a problem. But the lifestyle has just been absolutely fantastic. Just feel a load from off and really like the direction that the city is taking, if that matters in all the area. And yeah, it really has been a wonderful, we look forward to investing in the city and, and try to improve it in ways that we can. Get volunteering, Gail said get involved in history and maybe, you know, politics at some point, I don't know. We'll see what goes. But thanks so much for, for hearing me and, and welcoming me.
There may be something to help me because he's got experience.
You're retired. They're already retired, right?
I retired before he retired.
When, when you officially retired?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I told Bob how nice his house looked. I love that house down there.
Beautiful.
Thanks. I've always liked that house, so.
Oh, yeah, we've had good people that have really given us the trace and everything. We put a lot, we put a lot of work into it. Didn't need a ton, but we put a lot into it and it's really, it's, the house is singing and we're just thrilled with it.
Yeah, great.
Just bought the one across the street too.
Good idea.
So we're having a quarter of a maiden service.
Yeah, good idea. Well, welcome again. And Gail, thanks for bringing it. Okay, roll call.
Call.
Here.
Crispin.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Blair. Schultz.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
I'll move that we excuse Mr. Blair from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Call.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. This is one of those nights when I say call and you say call.
Yeah.
I'm gonna repeat. I'm gonna be that parrot.
There's a neck. We have the minutes from November twenty third, twenty twenty four. Does anybody see any need for a change or correction or anything? I think Kelly did them just before she went on vacation.
She did, quickly.
I didn't see anything, but maybe.
Okay.
I'll move that we accept these minutes as printed.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Call. On, on one of the pages, you've got him as Mrs. Hawk.
Oh.
Okay.
There was a difference?
With that change.
With that change, yes.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, now roll call.
I got you.
Call.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Hawk.
Here.
Johnson.
Bob, I'm sorry, this is, I've lost control already.
Schultz.
Yes.
Sorry, I had to get Lynch.
Yes. We're good.
Did you get Johnson?
I did. I heard him say.
Bob, it's a little bit less formal than Columbus.
Any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
Okay, we have two committee reports tonight. Economic Strategies and Cooperation is Mr. Johnson's committee. What you got, Mr. Johnson?
Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee met in the city council chambers at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, five thirty P M. I presided and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Crispin, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Ted Hawk, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mrs. Chelsea Baker, economic development director, Mr. Mark Pittsick, city attorney, and Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee reviewed progress with industrial development. The administration advised the committee of open projects. Number two, Mrs. Baker advised that approximately fifty local school dish, uh, students had toured business locations within our community during the manufacturing day tour. Mrs. Baker noted that the tours were a great success. Mrs. Baker continued and stated that a survey would be sent for all who participated. Number three, the administration advised that Mrs. Kate Wells had been hired for the open community de- development position at the O S U extension office. Number four, the committee noted the status of various business development projects within the downtown area. Number five, the committee reviewed progress with commercial development. Number six, the administration advised the committee of the positive work with Small Nation. Number seven, the administration advised of the upcoming events such as the Small Business Saturday that will be held on Saturday, November thirtieth, Downtown Live, that is on Friday, December second, and the Christmas Parade that will be hel- held on Sunday, December eighth. Number eight, the committee benefited from presentation of the promotional video of Washington courthouse. Number nine, the committee noted the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new location of Ohio State Jobs. Number ten, the administration advised the committee that planning work continued regarding the revitalization district. Number eleven, Mrs. Baker made reference to an incentive program from a small rural community in northwest Kansas. Respectfully submitted myself and Mrs. Kelly Ford, reporting secretary.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
So we don't confuse anybody. Downtown Live is this Saturday.
Oh, okay. Anything else or any other questions?
I'll move that we accept these minutes as read.
Second.
Roll call.
Call.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. And we have finance and personnel with a nice green Christmas paper. Mr. Crispin?
Thank you. The Finance and Personnel Committee met in the city council chambers of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty P M. I presided and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Ted Hawk, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief, Mr. Ron Sockman, finance director, Mr. Mark Pittsick, city attorney, and Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee benefited from report of the statement of cash for the month ending October twenty twenty four. Number two, the committee benefited from a report on investments of the city of Washington courthouse. Three, the administration noted the change in the life insurance provider for city employees. Number four, the committee benefited from a review of the end of the year U M R pace plan activity and checkpoint evaluat- evalu- excuse me, Ted. Evaluation report. Number five, the administration advised the committee that training of the new police department personnel progressed. Six, the committee recommended that the administration proceed with entering a licensing renewal with the P U C O for natural gas aggrav-. Is this aggravation or aggravation?
Aggravation is more like it.
Number seven, the committee benefited from a review of electric and gas aggregation renewal rate. Number eight, the committee recommended that Martin Renison be asked to serve on the civil service board. Number nine, the administration advised the committee that the demolition of Carlton Manor was complete. Ten, the administration advised the committee of the sinkhole that had occurred on South Main Street. Number eleven, the committee recommended that the si- council meeting scheduled for December twenty fifth, twenty twenty four be moved to Monday, December twenty third, twenty twenty four. Respectfully submitted by me, Mrs. Kelly Ford, reporting secretary.
And I think we said five thirty on the twenty third, right?
Yes.
Any questions or has Mr. Renison said yes to that?
He, I, we've been occupied with some other things. We'll talk with Martin in the near future.
Okay.
Just on this aggregation, I had somebody come to the door tonight, right during it should have been supper time, I wasn't eating, but and kinda halfway telling me that he would, they wanted to give me a rebate for my A E S stuff and he was basically trying to get me to switch over to another company from what our aggregation is. And I kinda unloaded on him and, uh, so I wanna make a public apology, cause I have no idea who he was or where he is. I don't know how to get ahold of him. I, I feel bad of how I talked to him, but it, it really aggravated me. They're still going around trying to, to, and, and they don't do it in an honest way. They do it in a backhanded way. And, uh, so, for whatever that's all worth.
Mr. Lynch.
I make a suggestion. If you catch that big opossum, put that trap with the opossum in it by your front door and it'll get rid of all them people.
Yes, Mr. Denon.
An observation that we have talked about before. You have to get a permit for door to door sales in the city of Washington courthouse and the individual question did. There wasn't any reason to deny it, uh, cause, but we could look at the door to door sales ordinance and make it, oh, less appealing.
What, what aggravated me was the deception that he used and that's what lit my fire.
Well, they, it really confuses people.
Yeah, I do. I feel like they're very deliberately confusing and make it sound like you're getting a great deal and, yeah.
And you have a lot of people that, that switch and they're, they're perfectly welcome to do that. And then later on, they figure out it isn't such a great deal a couple of months down the road and it is just complicated. Just makes a mess.
Yes. When these people get permits to go door to door, do we have a list of addresses of an opt out, like who don't want solicitation in the city? Do you think that would be wise, maybe getting a list for people who don't want?
Uh, I mean, you could have people provide us like an opt out list that they, they don't want to be solicited. But generally that, that ordinance needs, it's, you can make that, you can improve that and eliminate some of this. Cause that, it's really, quite honestly, quite the nuisance and then we hardly had anybody until you had the, the door to door gas and electric because you know, the, the Kirby salesman thing, that had almost completely disappeared and uh, for years, it was only one company. Well, they'd always have a student, usually from Eastern Europe, that they'd send out to, to sell these educational books. Uh, and that was the only one you had for years, actually. But since you had door to door sales of electric and gas, that, that's really confused people and it's really been irritating. And it, quite honestly, too, it causes a lot of problems, not problems, but it generates a lot of inquiries at the police department about the individuals and, you know, if they're trying to deal with something else, that can really gum up the whole works, really.
I was thinking about it. I mean, there's been a few more door to door salesmen that I've noticed and some of them don't come in traditional form. Some of them are, uh, for example, tree trimmers who scammed my mother out of, uh, getting rid of her whole tree cause she, uh, doesn't remember, cause she's got dementia. So I'm thinking like, uh, for example, people with families where someone has a cognitive impairment who easily gets confused by these people coming and promising one thing and then charging for a different service later on. There needs to be an opt out program to protect the citizens.
Now, you could also make it a little bit clear about why, why we can deny the permit. Uh, cause that really, quite honestly, there isn't any really good way to do that now. In theory, you can, but it doesn't really explain to you how.
Well, I agree with you, Caleb, in theory. However, the national do not call list never worked. They found a way around that about the first day.
Yeah, yeah, it didn't work.
So it's, you're never, never gonna defeat them.
Yeah, I mean, as much as we can, I don't know, you know, at the top of Mark, if you can just how tight you can get with this without violating interstate commerce or, you know, causing some sort of other confusion because that i- it's a problem.
Anything else about that report? I think we need a motion to accept it.
I'll, uh, move that we accept these minutes as read.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Call.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Going back to the other report, Mr. Denon, have you and Chelsea met with the new county development O S U extension person?
I do not believe that we have.
I think she has.
She might have. I have not met the person.
Is she on the job now?
I thought she had started.
We have an interview with her Tuesday.
Has she started?
Yes, she has.
She has started?
She contacted me.
Okay.
Okay.
I knew it was gonna be in December, but I didn't know when in December.
Now, Chelsea participated in the interview process for that.
Yeah. Okay, moving on, Mr. Denon, your report.
Thank you. Would really like to thank the folks that were involved at the Christmas trees on the courthouse lawn and especially Rhonda Turner, uh, E R A Martin Realtors. That honestly was a great amount of fun. Uh, it really engaged a lot of people in a very positive way. And even though it was incredibly cold that night, uh, you had a surprising number of people that, that came out for that. And it was really honestly a tremendous amount of fun. Now, next year, hopefully you'll have better weather and if it's still that cold, we might, instead of saying you're gonna do it at six, but start things at five thirty, it might just start at six. Uh, cause I will say, I was sold pretty much in ice cube by the time.
I was gonna say, I don't know, you stood out there, or anybody did.
Uh, would like to thank everybody that participated in the Christmas parade. That is a lot of work, a lot of work for the Chamber of Commerce folks. And organizing that parade, there's more to it than you, you think. And every year, uh, oh, I used to love it. Harry Wright, you know, would announce the parade floats as they went past with the Chamber of Commerce. And invariably, the people don't line up like they're supposed to. You get people out of line, once you get one of them out of line, then, then you know, you're, you messed up the entire way. And Harry would very dutifully stick to the list and announce what was in front of him when it was obviously not that. And that was, I just always got a kick out of that. That was, that was a lot of fun. Uh, would like to sh- thank the shop owners that were open on Small Business Saturday. I enjoyed a nice walk down to Kinsey's Candles and I shopped with Denise and also went down to Jill's Store. Uh, and that was a very pleasant day. And the way Ohio State played, that was the only good thing about the day. Musical.
Yes, you would be.
Musical munchkins wanted to point that out, cause I think this is a very positive thing. For kids five and under at the Y M C A. It's a little new program that they're doing to introduce kids to, to music. If you want more information, you need to talk to the Y M C A folks, but I thought that was something incredibly nice. But for kids five and under. To all the people that worked to make the Washington courthouse frish's work, uh, thank you. At the end, Frish's Restaurant didn't treat you very well, but all of you treated us very well to the very end. I mean, working like that till the end, after you've been, quite honestly, not treated in a very respectful way. Uh, was a great credit to, to those folks and it, you know, things change and you have to accept that, but the way that they chose to exit with several of those stores was just not, not the way you do that with people. Uh, we continue to look at raw water. Uh, however, we've been able to pump quite a bit of water out of the creek, oh, of late, about fifty five million gallons. And you're almost to the point where we can declare this something that we don't have to worry about. Uh, you're definitely quickly headed in that direction, which is a very positive thing. Uh, you know, a lot of communities experienced a whole lot worse situations and we were very fortunate. Uh, but that is something that rapidly, uh, will not be an issue. Uh, the twenty twenty five budget, now I was very kind for you folks. Uh, I didn't drag out the projector, so we don't have to suffer through the PowerPoint fifty two thousand slides. Uh, a little bit about the process. Uh, and I think everybody is aware of this, but just to refresh your memories, that is something that we begin to work on in late August. And then you work on it a bit more intently in October with the departments. Uh, and then you involve the finance department and you go through and create the draft budget uh, that we then make sure works. And then we take it to the work session of city council where we explain it to you folks in a lot more detail than we're gonna talk about tonight. Uh, cause quite honestly, oh, I feel so sorry, cause I bored everybody to death with this stuff for so long. Uh, and from that point, that budget document, that, that thick pile of stuff called this, we use to draft the appropriation ordinance that you've already had on first reading and second reading or not. And that is what makes the, the budget in a sense a reality and the, the budget document itself, it organizes things, but it's really the appropriation ordinance that is the, the moving manner. Uh, I gave you the budget message again, the letter. Uh, that talks about, uh, really economic conditions as much as it does our budget. There's always a number of things for communities that are gonna be beyond our control. And quite honestly, that gets into a great deal of human psychology too, because depending on events, the way people, their, their sentiment can be radically different than their actual physical circumstances. The economy here has been pretty decent. Now, a lot of folks, you have the inflation problem for a lot of households. And that is going to, to stick around in people's minds much longer than, than when the, the event passes. Like, you know, if we talk with Mr. Lynch or Mr. Schultz or Mr. Crispin or Ted, uh, they will vividly remember the nineteen eighties. And that is something that will stick with people for some time. You're gonna have into the foreseeable future, uh, still strong demand for housing, still strong demand for labor, uh, which are positive problems to have. They come with their own challenges, in particular, the housing one. And at the moment, you're gonna be in a position where there's a tremendous amount of need uh, for us to invest in assets and services. Uh, the name of the game will be not getting too far ahead of revenue uh, and balancing that out. You've carried out a number of improvements in a very aggressive manner for a couple of years and we talked about the need in twenty five and twenty six to relax that a bit because twenty seven, all things being equal, you should have much more flexibility. Now, that's projecting honestly a bit far into the future. And events can change that, cause really I, I don't care. You can get any number of very educated people together that talk to you about the future and at the end of the day, it's an educated guess. That, you know, there is no magic predictor of the way events turn out. And even in a very sophisticated economy and a very sophisticated financial system, the ability to predict the results of policy changes or events is, is quite honestly not great. Uh, and I'd like to tell you that this is a science that has been honed down to a fine point, but that is not the case at all. Uh, but that is something that we will talk about like we always have as you go through the year too. You know, there's been times where we've talked to you folks about, you know, we need to adjust a little bit. Uh, or there has been occasions where counselors talk to us about, you know, they would like to take advantage of any number of opportunities and we have found the, the resources for you to do that. For a while, we're gonna be recommended a bit more caution. But that is something that we will continue to work through. Uh, you can look at the budget letter and then we're gonna talk about some examples, which are these handy dandy graphs I got for you. The first one's the general fund. Now, it's not everything in the general fund. Uh, but police in any community is very rarely, it's almost always the, the largest category of expense. Very rarely is it second or third down the list. And if you take police, fire and municipal court, uh, that's slightly more than half of the entire expenses of general fund. Police, fire, court, they're all people intensive. Uh, and that can consume a great deal of resources. Now, they're all very much needed. Uh, but that is just a reality when we talk to you about uh, the budget itself. Now, if you look at a department like, let's say, the water system, it'll be the exact opposite situation where the personnel part of it's much smaller. And what drives cost is, oh, physical things you can touch, equipment, utilities. That is what drives that. Uh, the water department, and that is radically different than what occurs in the general fund. Now, if you wanted to look at, we're gonna use police as an example, okay? Cause they're not only just in the general fund. So the second one is Fund one oh one. You're gonna find police there along with fire and a few other things. Large departments like fire, their budget is gonna, I'm sorry, like police, are gonna occur in more than one area within the budget. So if you wanna get a whole picture, you gotta kinda look a couple of different places. So you got one hundred, one oh one. Uh, third one, you also have street in one oh one. Third slide, we're gonna go through a couple of funds related to street. That's also an illustration of, there's money in different areas. You got the two ten, uh, street budget out of Fund two ten. I divided out into two very broad categories that, that don't, if you look for them in the budget, you're not gonna find them expressed this way. It's just labor and then operations capital. Uh, Fund two twenty is again the street fund. There, you're gonna see that there's very little labor in it and capital because you satisfied most of that in Fund uh, two ten and in Fund one oh one. They're separate funds because their source of revenue is slightly different. All of the street funds in the two-hundreds, they're all gas tax or, uh, license bureau driven, but they're, they're a little bit, as time went on, when there was a little bit of a tweak, we created a new fund each time so you could keep track of and forecast revenue a little bit easier. And then you get to Fund Two-Forty and you moved it all into the operations capital side of it. The street would be an excellent example of a department that's really, the cost is driven by, oh, it's driven by asphalt, it's driven by, uh, concrete, not so much the people side of it like the police and fire department. Fund Two-Forty-One, street, again, operations capital completely. Now, if you tried to figure out then, how do we pay for paving? If you just go through the two-hundred funds, you're not going to be able to get there. Four-O-Two is, we call it the capital fund, it's really capital and durable items. And I broke out police, fire, fire apparatus, paving and street traffic. And by street traffic, I'm talking about, oh, traffic signals, signs, that type of, of material. And that is where you would find actually the bulk of the paving budget of what we use to pave streets with. You're going to get some of that out of Two-Ten, Two-Twenty, so forth. But that is where you're going to mysteriously find where you got this other, oh, three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. And again, like a department like police, uh, we've looked at it primarily now in One-Hundred and One-O-One, which is, uh, personnel and operations. Four-O-Two would be, oh, like a police cruiser, some ballistic vests this year, that type of durable stuff, for lack of a better description. Same thing with fire. And then to finally finish it out, you'd have to go to, I just lumped them together, because they're relatively smaller. The funds that are in the, the seven-hundreds, uh, and there, uh, they're in, again, broad categories, police, youth outreach, uh, law enforcement trust. And then we benefit from a small portion of property taxes. That is not, though, the primary source of operational funds of the city, that's the income tax. Every year, when you, when you get your tax bill biannually, you can look at that chart, it's a whole lot easier to read now. And most of that is schools and the county, and we benefit from a very small part of it. Part of our inside millage, we dedicate towards helping offset the pension costs of police and fire. And that's the funds, two funds all the way at the end, almost before you get to the end of the budget. If you look at the budget in totality, you need to remember that this year, you got a lot of one-time stuff or stuff that has dramatically increased, but it's not necessarily part of our operational budget. Like you got three-hundred-thousand dollars in that tree grant, okay, that's going to be an unusual blip. You got, uh, an increase in the income of those joint economic development funds that we have with Jefferson Township. But until twenty-twenty-six, uh, that, that's overwhelmingly Jefferson Township's money and not ours, but we have to budget for the income and expense. So you got a lot of things that after you factor them out, your costs have risen in personnel and operations, but not as dramatically if you just compared the number at the end from this year to, to last year. If you factor that out, you've had more of a normal increase in the six percent range total. And a lot of that's driven, quite honestly, like everybody else, is driven by inflation. You know, a lot of stuff that police and fire did a couple of years ago, the stuff they buy is much more expensive now. And unlike the federal government, really the state of Ohio, if everything goes well in the year, you will not spend all of that money that we budget. But police, fire, water, sewer, they all operate three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day. And you folks don't want me at a fire to walk down from Two-Nineteen North Main Street on, you know, three o'clock in the morning and tell the fire boys, you know, I'm sorry, but, you know, the meter's up and you quit putting out this fire and go home. It just doesn't work that way. So that is why there's a little bit of room there, so that you don't have those type of issues. And quite honestly, you know, we work and the departments are very good about just not spending money for the purpose of spending money. They're actually very good about that. That is the most summarized way I can give you the budget. You know, you can go on, you know, page by page and have the, the technical wonders of the world, analyze it and so forth, but it really doesn't get you a lot. And really, there's a point at which, you know, you just begin to bore everybody to death. So that is the budget talk. Just want to remind everybody about Downtown Live coming up on Saturday, it's a lot of fun. That's four to eight, you know, that is, we'll have the, the carriage down here and that is the Main Street Fayette project. But they do the carriage rides and a lot of other kid-related items and, oh, I enjoy myself enormously. We have those warming barrels in front of the courthouse lawn, so I get to, you know, light things on fire. Well, you know, you might need the fire department after I'm done, but, uh, it is, it's just a nice evening. That's everything I got.
Anybody have any questions?
Just, well, I, I'll bring it up at the commit, next committee meeting we have, but for the cemetery, I have some ideas out there you could do, that cemetery's not completely dead, you know, there's things you can do about. Marketing tools, there's some marketing things you can do out there, so I'll bring it up at a committee meeting.
Okay.
So I have some ideas that I think would work.
Okay.
I know would work. So, and bring in some more revenue out there.
Yeah, cemetery is, they're doing well out there in terms of the maintenance of it, but revenues have not been.
Well, this is, I'm talking about the revenue part of it, yes.
And whenever cemetery's fund is Two-Thirty, okay, that's where you take, like, if somebody buys a grave, that's where that money goes, Fund Two-Thirty. Two-Thirty, however, oh, it won't cover all the cemetery's expenses by far, and that's why you find it in Fund One-O-One. So the more that Two-Thirty can support the operations of the cemetery, the more One-O-One dollars that you can save, that you can spend on police, fire, street and street lighting. So that is always a helpful thing, though, that the more self-sufficient it is, the better off everybody is.
Well, I'll bring it up at committee and we'll see if we can't liven up the cemetery a little bit.
Can I ask Sister Jo a question?
What?
What's, you're going to market the cemetery?
No, no.
You mean like people?
No, not market the cemetery. No, no, I got other ideas. You'll see what I mean by bringing up the committee. Now, you could market.
Yeah.
You could market the cemetery, they do it all the time.
People are starting to get in there now.
I figured that was coming. I knew that was coming.
People are dying to get in there.
I see.
Mister, Mister Denon, I told you before, when you gave us this, that I actually and truly read the whole letter and I really believe that I was back at Miami University in my economics class.
Oh, gosh, yes.
And it was well done. And I told you that before, but I'm telling you again here at a council meeting. It explained it in ways that were understandable.
Okay.
Better than my economics professor did. And, uh, so, uh, I appreciate that, because I don't like to look at all those individual numbers and all those kind of things.
Okay.
And so, thank you for doing that, it was excellent.
I like your conceptual, conceptual legislation.
Okay. Mister Sockman, this is not your normal meeting, you got anything tonight?
No, we have a, we have a small condensed end of year for you at the next one.
Great. Yeah, even if we don't have a committee meeting, that'd be good to have, if we don't.
Well, echoing a little bit there a little quick, one before Joe had said, what I want to do is, I'm putting together a debt service so you guys can actually see where a lot of those payments, where we come. I think that'll help us, because like if you do want to do a project, look at when those bills are coming due, like July is always a good time, like bond payments.
That's a good idea.
So that would be, when you get, we'd be able to say, okay, you know, maybe June, maybe August, because we owe two-hundred-and-seven thousand, July first, so I think giving those numbers to you, we're going to kind of let you see when are those dates when we should be exercising those things.
What's coming due and how much?
Yes.
Yes, I like that idea, yes, break it down a little bit.
And that'll give you our total debt service, I mean, the, the operational costs and stuff, that will, this will be actually the debt that we owe.
Yes, okay.
It'll, it'll help.
Yeah, that's great.
And it'll tell you when it's going to fall off, so it makes that.
Yes, there you go, when we can count on it and use that money for something else.
Yeah, and some folks, they, they forget. They think that, you know, we pass a budget and magically this, this money is just created. And it, it might work for the federal government, but here, uh, you know, that comes in during the course of the year. You know, you have a flow of income from income tax and from water and sewer payments. Things like a little bit of money you get from property taxes, you know when that's going to occur, because it, it's biannually, basically. But you, you gotta manage what you're trying to do with the, the cash position, so that you don't get yourself into a problem. And, you know, that's why you don't let everybody, oh, on the first day of January, just, just run out there and I wouldn't try to get everything I've got planned for the year done. Well, you gotta spread that out a bit.
Well, you know, news stations at the end of the year always do a kind of a review of all the main events in Columbus or wherever it was, and I'd like that idea, I'd like Chelsea to do the same thing, a little brief review of what her year's been like. So, anyway.
Oh, I forgot, Channel Six, we've always loved. Much more than Four and Ten.
But I, seriously, I always enjoy those year, because it reminds you of all the things that went on during the year that you kind of forgot about.
It's always amazing, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. So, Ron, I look forward to that and we'll get Chelsea to do kind of the same thing. Mister Pitstick is absent, we have no local residents signed up to speak this evening. So we'll go to legislation previously introduced. The first is ordinance number thirty-six, twenty-twenty-four, second reading.
I'll move the motion to place ordinance number thirty-six, twenty-twenty-four on second read.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Upstain.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-six dash two thousand and twenty-four, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Washington courthouse, Fayette County, Ohio, during fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, next is resolution number R thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-four, second reading.
I'll move, we put a resolution, R thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-four on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-eight dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington courthouse, appointment of Jennifer Agleton to the Tree Committee to fulfill an unexpired term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Move for adoption.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. We have no new legislation, so we can move right into miscellaneous. Mister Johnson, what do you have this evening, our next, the last meeting of the year?
I have a little bit of advice, if anyone comes to a committee meeting and they're so diligently taking notes, like I saw, uh, our guest up front, that's an easy way to get on a committee. That's it.
That's it, okay, Mister Schultz.
Well, Bob, I want to welcome you and your wife to the community, you know, it's, uh, we, we appreciate you coming here and, and putting some information, give us some information and, uh, and contributing to the community. We appreciate that very much, so, and I think the trees on the courthouse lawn look, have you seen those lately?
Yeah, we were, we were at El Trusa that night.
Okay.
And unfortunately, I would have loved to have gone down, but I think it's, we had to.
Go past the courthouse tonight and it's snowing, it looks beautiful. There you go. Okay, but anyway, they look absolutely beautiful and I'm hoping that the Downtown Live is good weather and a lot of turnout for that, that you'll love too, that's a different, so that's, that's nice, so. And I wish everybody a, well, a little early, but Merry Christmas, so that's all I have, thank you very much.
Sylvia.
I will echo everyone in welcoming you to the community, it's great to see you here at city council. So welcome and thanks for stopping by. I have on good authority that Santa and the Missroots are going to be making an appearance at Doctor Fitton's office on Friday. So if anyone has any littles who would like to visit with Santa and Mrs. Claus, they can do so from ten to, I think she said twelve-thirty. So that'll be kind of fun, and then I think they're also making an appearance again next week for the early intervention kiddos, so.
Great.
Busy time for Santa and his misses.
We should have had him come to city council, we could have sat on his lap and told him what we wanted.
He's currently sitting at home incognito with the two hot-tempered children.
Okay, Mister Hawk, what do you have?
Well, I wanted to tell about how I saved Thanksgiving, I told those stories.
You're right.
But I don't know if we got time for that, since the budget thing went so long. I did learn to run a washing machine and a dryer this, that couple of weeks. My caregiver had a hip replaced. And so, I, I, I learned some housekeeping chores. And, uh, she's doing well, I, I hope that she'll be able to take back over her duties. I, I drew the line at folding clothes, because I just can't make a shirt turn out square when it's folded. But, uh, anyway, life is good and, and the house is warm. Getting ready, looking forward to Christmas and, uh, want to welcome you, Bob. I, I don't watch the local news much, but I have seen you on TV and you do a good job, I think.
I don't watch it anymore either.
But, uh, anyway, I, I just can't think of anything else to say, so.
Well, we're glad Mrs. Hawk is doing well.
Yes, she's doing very well.
Have you picked out her wonderful Christmas present yet?
No, I ran out of stuff to give her, the, the weed eater and all that other stuff.
Sweeper, everything else you got. The snow blower.
Maybe a girls' sale or something.
Okay, Mister Christmas.
Thank you, welcome to our community, Bob. I miss you on Channel Six already. You guys had the best.
Maybe I'll just go over to your house one day. Give the news.
And thank, let's see, we only had what, really one, well, you're the, the honored guest, another guest, she's always honored too, but. Anyway, I hope everybody has a nice Christmas and, uh, probably said, oh, Ted, if you done laundry long as I have for about forty years, you learn to get hangers, you don't fold that stupid stuff. Hang shirts up.
Just hang them up.
I've been thinking, if I do anything, I'll probably do the roll method, I'll roll everything off.
And you roll that one?
Hey Ted, I had the same problem several years ago, my wife and I had to learn how to run the washer and the dryer. I put her sweater in there and when I took it out, it fit our little dots of dog. It shrunk and down to nothing.
Well, I tried my hand in a dishwasher one time.
I didn't do it, she slapped me.
I, I tried putting the paper plates in it and they wouldn't let me use it again, so.
Out of control now, out of control, I put my pin down, my pin is down now. Out of control, Dale, out of control, I put my pin down, my pin is down now.
Mr. Dennen, whenever they started doing miscellaneous, was this the idea behind it?
No, ironically, the institutional memory, this is, this is ironic, was that miscellaneous was for miscellaneous business, and then years ago, they put council on television for the first time when McDees had the Little Cork Cable Company. And that is when miscellaneous transformed into the way you use it now.
The way we use it now, whatever comes to mind.
Which is why periodically I suggest that we get rid of it, and it never seems to happen.
Well, I'm gonna add to it, because I have written my year in poem. For the city, "Christmas in Courthouse" by Henry Wadsworth, council member. 'Twas a few nights before Christmas in all through the city, the lights were all on, they were really quite pretty. City manager Joe was asleep, all snug in his bed, while visions of budgets and jets danced in his head. Finance man Ron was happy, there was money at year's end. He just hopes council won't spend it when the new year begins. Attorney Mark is asleep dreaming of candy canes and fudge, he's enjoying his time dealing with the city's new judge. Chief Fenari and Downing are sleeping, no criminals or fires to fight. Gary Dean is dreaming of a Christmas that is not white. The gals in the office are happy, the phones and people are still. No more complaints about the city or their sewage and water bill. Kelly and Tina are relaxing, some rest time at last. Joe and Ron are not needing something and wanting it fast. Chelsea is relaxing with new businesses in her dreams. Things look bright for the new year, or at least that's what it seems. And what about council? The six guys and a lass. They are out of ordinances and resolutions to pass. Mr. Blair can take a break from bringing vitality to a city site. Mr. Johnson can have a break from another courtroom fight. Mr. Hawk is asleep dreaming of White Castle Christmas. Mr. Schultz won't have to do a funeral, he really won't miss it. Mr. Christman won't be selling water till the new year clock starts ticking. Mrs. Call will be cooking turkey, but never a chicken. And what a Mr. Lynch, as he takes the year's final roll call. He wishes a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to one and all. I have so much fun doing that every year, so I'm sorry if you're tired of it, but I love it. It was fun trying to get something to rhyme with chicken, so, anyway. We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes, we are adjourned at eight-twenty-four by that clock.